Go from there. Tanner Cole.
Here.
Matthew Allison.
Here.
Paula Bertram. You're muted.
Here.
Right. And I see our applicants, James Almonte. Can you hear me, Jim?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Brian Marchetti.
Yep, here.
Excellent. All right. So, good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. I don't know if it's being broadcast.
It is.
It is, okay. Over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely for the last time. The town of Lunenburg, in response to COVID-19 virus, is currently following the guidance of the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. All town facilities are currently open to the public. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 30A, section 20, all public meetings are conducted remotely. This, the order which can be found, which you can find, posted on the town managers, on the town website, on the COVID-19 Information Center page. Access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is recorded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is meeting by Zoom video conference as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join using a smartphone, tablet, or other internet-enabled device. Just go to the Zoom app and enter the meeting ID, or call 888-475-4499. Again, it's 888-475-4499. Meeting ID number for this is 816-95763185. One more time, 816-95763185. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and some of you are here on video conference. Please be sure to not share or show us anything. You don't want preserved forever and ever on the internet because it and with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening. Welcome to Planning Board. First order of business, any public comment? Seeing none. We'll move forward right into our first appointment, which is a continuation of the hearing for 757 Chase Road. Would the applicant like to bring us up to speed?
Yes. Excuse me. My name is Jim Almonte from Land Design Collaborative, registered landscape architect and project manager on the project. So, last we spoke, we had some plan revisions to to take care of, which we did, and sent them off to Graves and to Adam at the town. We did receive a response letter from, or a comment, a little follow-up comment letter from Graves on Friday, which addressed most of the outstanding issues, and followed up with Jeff today on a phone call. And without going through every item on the letter, there were some just minor typos on the plan that needed to be taken care of. But for the most part, all of the comments were addressed, and I'm not going to put words in Jeff's mouth, but I think he was pretty satisfied with the plan revisions and our responses to the comments. So, that was taken care of, and we also had some comments from the last planning board hearing that we addressed on the plans as well. Some of those had to do with some turning movements around the building and those types of things. So, we had already received approval from the ZBA for our special permits before the last hearing with the planning board. We also have been just continuing hearings with Conservation Commission since our initial filing with them, and we have a follow-up meeting with them on Wednesday. They wanted to kind of wait to see how it played out with the planning board and ZBA. So, again, we have a follow-up meeting with them on Wednesday.
Okay. Mr. Graves, would you like to, or Mr. Walsh from Graves Engineering, would you like to just highlight any outstanding issues that you're concerned about in relation to this project?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering, engineering consultant to the planning board. Mr. Almonte basically summed it up nicely. There's just, with respect to a plan revision, there's a larger subsurface infiltration system at the front of the building that receives runoff from the roof. The hydrology model, the outlet pipe from that to the drainage system is a six-inch diameter. The plans show a four-inch diameter. Contractor obviously should put in a six-inch diameter to match the hydrology model. Let's see. And the other thing is with respect to soil testing for that subsurface infiltration system, I understand because of the building operations and the building location, they could not do soil testing now like they normally would. And I think it's important to do soil testing to know what the groundwater is there. But nevertheless, if it's all right with the board, the design seems reasonable. But if it's all right with the board, it just soon sees confirmatory soil testing happen at some point. And I've seen it done elsewhere in other communities where soil testing would be done when the machine mobilizes to the site and they have excavation equipment, and the area for the car dealership is no longer used for that purpose. And I think there needs to be a signature on a stormwater form from the owner or something like that, housekeeping issue. But those were the three things left on my letters of Friday, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a question in regards to the turning radius. I don't know that I've received an updated plan. When was the update done for the traffic model for this project?
It was done, the last revision was from May 19th. There should be, I think, the last, towards the last two sheets. Do you want me to share my screen, Adam?
I don't think you can. I don't remember seeing anything on May 19th. I looked through because my, I can't get onto the server, but I went back to the most recent plans I had.
If you make him a co-host, he can share his screen.
I mean, let me see if I can do this. Yeah, I can't.
And even if we can just look at the plan that you currently have, Adam, maybe we can show that and see if that matches up. Because I know both myself and Mr. Allison had a concern about the turning radius going over one of the medians in the back and
Yeah, this is the one from the last meeting. This is the May 5 revision.
I believe it's sheet EX102.
That's correct.
James, can you email Adam the current plan?
I think I can do that. I may not be able to email the entire set, but I can certainly email these sheets. Let's see if I can do this quickly.
Yeah, so it'd be that sheet, Adam.
Yeah, and it was, it was here you were talking about, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think that's an island, is it?
It's, it's just striping.
Oh.
Yeah. And we just, all we did there was we just extended the radius out further. But if they had to, they can just stripe. It's just paint striping, so they could drive over. It's not a landscape island.
Okay. And then I guess my only other comment is it looks like it's extremely tight in the corner by the tolling.
It is. We, we added, or we had three bollards on that corner to protect the corner of the building. This is, this is for the car carrier.
Anybody know where the background noise is coming from? Thank you, Paula.
So, yeah, there, there are three bollards to protect that corner of the building. And what we found with these, the software is, it's extremely conservative with these turning movements. So, we basically have to use what the software provides, but we found with field checks that the software is extremely conservative with their movements. So, you know, there, there is room to get a car carrier on the back corner of the building there.
Okay. It just seems awfully tight and, you know, just driving around some of the new construction facilities, I get a little bit concerned. It seems like things get really snug, especially when you put snow piles and things in the way, so.
Mr. Chairman, on that point, whoever has control of the screen, could we scroll down to the, to the vehicle that was modeled?
It could be in the top right.
Yes.
It's in the top right.
Okay. This is a conservatively long vehicle as far as the trailer is concerned. It's not uncommon now for car carriers, the tractor portion, to consist of a longer frame that can carry at least one, if not one car length and maybe up to three vehicles. And then the, the fifth wheel is located behind the tractor instead of over the ax, the rear axle. So, that's the pivot point between the tractor and the trailer. And, and the short of it is, is that with a longer tractor and a shorter trailer, you'll actually have better turning movements than this vehicle here. The semi-trailer is, you know, something that was around a long time ago, but more often than not, what I see on the road now is more of the, the assemblies that have a longer tractor and a shorter trailer, still the overall length, but with a pivot point in the middle, it maneuvers even better than this one. So, I, from that perspective, I was comfortable with the tightness of the turning maneuvers on the site.
Excellent. Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have any questions, but I will concur with Mr. Walsh's concern regarding the soil testing for the septic system. I voiced that concern at the last meeting. While there may be adequate room for a system without the soil testing to confirm the conditions, which dictates what the system shall be, I would be concerned. So, I would agree and concur with Mr. Walsh that that soil testing has to be done.
Okay. I thought that testing you were referring to, Mr. Walsh, was for the subsurface drainage. Is that?
For the subsurface infiltration system that's at the front of the site, I'm sorry, the front of the building. It's the larger of the underground infiltration systems.
Okay. And that's handling the water coming off of the roof in the parking lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
Don't we also have a new septic system going in that we don't have plans for?
Yes, I can address that question. So, I know, I know you asked that question at the last hearing, and you were concerned, you wanted to see the grading for that system. And I, I think I misspoke at the last hearing, said that the system's currently being designed. It's, it's actually not. We're utilizing the existing system, which was designed for 63 employees for the two dealerships. We don't have anything close to that at this point, and we understand that, you know, we'll have to go through a Title V inspection prior to occupancy of the new building. So, you know, any, anything, any modification to that system, if required, would be approved or under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health, and it would have to obviously get a Title V inspection.
How old is the system?
Don't know how, how old it is. I don't know, Brian, do you know when that went in?
No, I don't know. I, I don't know when it first went in. But we've had a check that's, we've gone through a couple of processes with the, with the board and the planning board. And as you said, it's designed, I thought it was 65 employees, but 63, I'm sure is correct. And we're far, far under that number at this point. So, I don't think there's going to be any modifications required of the septic system. So, that will be as it stands.
So, personally, personally, I would like to have a Title V inspection done and have, have, see those results. A lot of it's going to depend on the age of the system, the maintenance of the system during the course of its life. Typically, a septic system lasts about 20 to 30 years. I worked for the Board of Health for 18 years, so I'm very familiar with Title V. And I'm concerned that we're approving an addition now based on an existing system that we're not sure will be in compliance with the new soil modeling, which went into effect long after the system was installed. It may or may not pass Title V.
I'm sure that, sure the Board of Health will be more than happy to require us, require us to do whatever's necessary under their regulations and stay Title V to make sure it's in compliance at the time.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I understand that, but the issue that I'm having, where is the septic system located, the existing septic system located?
It's along the rear property line behind the Mazda dealership.
And it is a pump system, so I don't know. I mean, my experience with septic systems is pump systems came along about the time Title V came along, but
Right, which was 1995.
It's 1995. It could be, yeah.
It could be great.
I guess for the purposes of our discussion where the system is located so far outside the construction area, and they do own a lot of real estate, if they get the Title V work done and it doesn't pass, they do have enough real estate to work with without interfering with the plan that we're approving.
Right. And the only question that I would have is this system was based on a number of employees. I'm, and honestly, I'm not sure. In, under the new regs, I thought it was based on square footage. So, that would be a question for Jim Giriffey, the Board of Health agent. But that would be, my only other question is, is it based on the number of employees or square footage? And it may be number of employees because of the fact that there are so many bays, et cetera, that are not really usable space.
And I think for the purposes of site plan approval, this board doesn't have authority over the septic system. And if they're claiming they're going to reuse it, you could condition that the plan is approved, if you choose to approve it, that the plan is approved with the use of the existing system. If the system need, it requires replacement or upgrade, then the plan requires modification.
Okay. And I would, and I would be very comfortable with that.
And I think the only thing that you would really be running into as far as an effect on this plan would be within the stormwater management permit, and probably mostly erosion and sedimentation control more than anything else, because it's going to remain in a pervious surface, and it's not going to create some manner of issue for runoff. It would just be during the construction managing that, that potential siltation.
Depending on what the topography ends up being.
Yes. But I mean, they have enough open land there that they could, they could figure something out.
Right.
If I could be, the, both the active and the reserve area is in the same area of the lot, which is the remote, as you face the building, remote rear left corner of the building. So, left corner of the property. It's really, it's nowhere close to the Subaru facility. And Lunenburg, like most towns, before we get a building permit, they're going to require a sign up from the Board of Health, which brings the Board of Health into the equation. And, you know, we're fully aware that we have, have to satisfy, no different than satisfying the planning board, satisfying the building inspector, and satisfying the Conservation Commission, we have to satisfy the Board of Health, which
I, I completely understand that, but we're approving a site plan based on conditions that may or may not change depending on that Title V inspection. So, our role is to approve the site plan, and if the site plan changes, then we would need to be aware of that. And I, so that's, therefore, I like Adam Bernie's recommendation that it's based on use of the existing system with a Title V inspection, and if a new system is needed, the plan may require a modification.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Can I just get clarification on the six-inch pipe versus the four-inch pipe that Jeff mentioned?
It, it was supposed to be six.
Right. It's four now, and it should be six.
Well, it's conflicting. The plan is saying four, and the hydrology model and the stormwater calculations say six. So, Jeff's just looking for the plans to, to be amended so that when they're handed to the contractor, it's installed correctly.
Retrieve will do. That's not a problem.
So, I, I would suggest that we just add a condition that we provide a noted change to the plan that, and you can identify that pipe pretty clearly, Jim, and that there's an incorrect identification there, and that's a six-inch pipe, not a, it should be a six-inch pipe for construction, not a four-inch as shown on the plan. We can just add, put on that, I would think, to simplify the process.
I mean, we, we'd probably condition that you submit a new set of plans, but
That's fine too, Adam.
Yep, we can do that.
Because we do require two final sets that get signed, and signed sets needs to stay onsite in the construction trailer.
That's not a problem. I know that was another comment on the letter. I think there was one or two plans that didn't have the signature block on it. So, does the board typically want the signature block on every sheet?
Yeah, they sign every sheet.
Okay. Okay.
Much to their chagrin.
Right. The last sheet in the set was just for informational purposes, and it, we, it wasn't prepared by us. Obviously, I can't, I can't modify somebody else's plan, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't
So, that's the pump station?
Yeah, the well, yeah.
I don't see that being
No. I mean, that, that's not really affecting anything.
Right.
I had a question. I don't see any stormwater erosion control, like a stormwater permit application as part of this. Did we? Are we running the two concurrently or
We are, we are.
Okay.
We're in the process of putting together an actual application for the stormwater permit. We didn't have one before. It was just filed under the same standard special permit, and since it's different, we're, we're developing a more appropriate application for the stormwater.
Okay. So, my question then is, we need to close. We're running the hearings concurrently, so they're
Yeah, I mean, you can make one motion that closes both hearings, and you make one, I, I would, I don't know that it matters. You could make two motions to cover either, or you could make one motion that approves both, and the conditions would be the same. It will prob, they have the same voting quantum. It's, but it's a three-vote requirement. And, excuse me, we'll probably write the decision so that it just includes both permits in one decision for ease.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Under the stormwater plan, what's the maintenance schedule, if any?
That, that was included in the stormwater report that was submitted.
Right, but I'm just asking, and I ought, to be perfectly honest, I don't have it in front of me. What was the maintenance schedule? Was it an annual review, or was it, do you, do you remember?
Yeah, do we have like the full O and M for everything?
Yes.
I didn't see, I didn't, one of the questions I had at the last meeting was I didn't see the O and M, and I still haven't seen it. I saw a stormwater report, but not necessarily an operation and maintenance plan.
If I may speak to that, it is at the back of the stormwater report that the construction phase O and M is called out. Separately, the, the long-term O and M is called out. For example, because of street sweeping, street pavement sweeping annually, March to April, water quality in the structures, monthly, upper manufacturers, recommendations, sediment forbay monthly, open retention basins monthly for the first three months, annually thereafter, and so on. There's about a total of six or seven BMPs that they've called out the frequency for.
So, one of the things, one of the issues I would have in putting both of these permits together, and I actually, Adam, I'm working for Tingsborough right now, and they have a fantastic stormwater permit that I'll be sharing with you. But the stormwater permit, I would like to see us start receiving the actual reports, and many communities do that. And so, I would like the stormwater permit to specify the conditions under which the systems are to be maintained, and then require the regular maintenance to be forwarded to the planning board.
The, the, the site plan approval also requires them to, to maintain compliance with stormwater management. So, even in the site plan, if someone were to do a development that was less than an acre, they'd still be developing a stormwater O and M plan for whatever stormwater BMPs they install. So, that can just be a condition that you put on.
But I don't want it just as a condition. I want it specified what needs to be done and the, and the and the frequency of the reporting that needs to go to the planning board. I don't want to end up having, say the dealership is sold, and someone comes back and says, "Well, I don't know what the stormwater report said back in, you know, 2021." I would like it specified in the permit what has to be done, as Jeff just articulated, as well as the, I would like it to say, "Reports shall be sent monthly, you know, during this period, and then annually thereafter." I would like it specified in the permit.
Okay.
Sorry to butt in on this, but I, I serve on a Conservation Commission, and we've got stormwater regulations, and we started a number of years ago with new applications coming forward. Something that worked well for us is we opted to require reporting to the commission once a year, what, what happened for the previous year, and we require that be submitted by maybe March 1st of the year thereafter. Rather than, than our staff, excuse me, receiving, receiving documents at all different times of the years and so forth. There's one period in the year where we expect the reports to come in. We've got a couple of facilities that are great about reporting to us, and it's working well. And you may consider something along those lines to simplify for your administrative staff. And secondly, with respect to the calling out the requirements in the permit, I might suggest that perhaps rather re-typing it, the construction phase, if you're going to address that, but certainly the long-term O and M, maybe make that Exhibit A and copy that and attach it to the back of the, of the decision rather than, than put it on the board's letterhead. Thank you.
I'm fine with both of those suggestions. And actually, in Tingsborough, that's exactly what they do. They require an annual report that articulates all of the monthly inspections and everything that's occurred as far as maintenance of the system during that period of time, and I'm fine with that.
And I, I like having the fixed date because it does, it makes it easier to plan ahead and say, on May 1st, we go through the, everything and make sure we have these reports, and whatever we don't have, we start.
Yeah, and that's fine with me.
Excellent. I have a question for Mr. Graves, Mr. Walsh. Sorry. I have a question from Mr. Graves, Mr. Walsh, sorry, Jeff. Typically, when we get into stormwater permits and basins, we trip over the requirement for a well to be installed in the basin. Is there a reason why we didn't trip over that here?
Well, we've had this discussion before on other projects, and I've had it with other communities. One thing that I really get worried about is to put a well through an impoundment and into the underlying soils, is even if one strives to seal the annular space around the well, inevitably, you're opening up a conduit to the underlying soils.
I understand that. What I'm asking is, is that requirement part of this project? Because then we would need to waive that. And I just want to make sure we're doing that if we need to.
Yeah. Quite frankly, I'm drawing a blank on that. I don't have my regulations, any of the local regulations. So I don't have an answer as to whether or not it tripped the criteria for this off the top of my head.
Okay. Does the applicant happen to know if?
I know Mike Scott is on the call. He was a design engineer. I don't know if he's just on in the background, or if he's listening. If he is, he's on mute. If you can hear me, Mike. I don't know off the top of my head if it was in, if it's in the stormwater regs.
This is Mike, Mike Scott. I don't know off the top of my head. Are you talking about an observation well? Is that the question?
Yeah, how big is, how big is your basin bottom?
I don't know the answer to that. It's in the stormwater report, so I can answer. I can find, I have the stormwater report called up. The O and M plan, those various documents are in that stormwater report. They could be called out there. It can be a standalone document, but I can look at the report if you give me a second.
Sure. It's more or less a housekeeping issue, as far as I'm concerned. We just want to make sure we're being thorough, and if you, the board's in favor of granting waivers in this condition, because we agree with Mr. Walsh, and don't really see the need for the well, but I just want to make sure that if you need a waiver, we provide one, so.
Yeah, so the bottom area is reported in the stormwater report. I'm looking at page 203. It's 2,410 square feet.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, it was 5,000 that started to trip the monitoring well, wasn't it, Paula?
I don't know off the top of my head.
The bottom stage is 2,410, the upper stage is 4,550. That's at the overflow. Actually, that's not true. It's 3,480. So it's between 2,400 up to 3,400. I can call your regs up, maybe.
But it's.
It's not our regs.
It's the stormwater handbook.
Oh, the state stormwater handbook. Yeah, I think that's, I'm not going to guess. I can look it up.
While Mr. Scott's working on that, is there anything else we need to address?
I just want to make sure I understand Mrs. Mr. Walsh's soil testing ask, and that's can formatory soil testing be done when the machine mobilizes to the site? But where specifically is that?
At the front of the building, same place as the pipe.
Is it the infiltration bit? Is it an?
Yes, yes.
Well, subsurface.
Subsurface infiltration.
So is this area here? Where they layer off.
Correct. I just want to know the language when we make motions, that's all.
There were a couple of other waivers that were requested that were in the initial cover letter. So while Mike is looking up the regs, I can, I don't know if you have referenced those, but I can let you know what they are. And I think Jeff addressed some of those in his last letter as well.
If you don't mind going through them, I think.
So the first one was requesting a waiver from the datum requirements. And I believe Jeff understood where we were coming with that. So the previous plans and all of the plans that were done for this were done on an assumed datum. They were done by Waterman Design back in 2019, and then they were reconfirmed by Brennan Consulting. So, and there are also three benchmarks, three benchmarks were recently set on the site, so the argument was not to have to convert everything to the required datum, just to keep it on the assumed datum. Keeps the plans consistent, and I think it eliminates some confusion from some of the previous plans that were designed. That was, that was the first waiver. The second waiver was that the architectural elevations need to be stamped by a registered architect. At this point, they're just conceptual. And they basically meet the Subaru's typical architectural style for branding. So obviously, the final architectural plans will be stamped by an architect, but this is basically a standard Subaru Subaru dealership building and elevations. And the last one was the impact reports for traffic, transportation, circulation, public services, fiscal, environmental, and community. And again, this being just a reconstruction of an existing facility with no new employees and improved traffic patterns with the curb cuts that we're adding at the front of the site, we're requesting a waiver from that impact report as well. So those were the three waivers that we initially requested.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
This is Mike. The stormwater handbook cites 5,000 square feet.
Okay. So we're in good shape there. Any other questions? All right. Well, seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion for a site plan approval.
Should we act on the waivers first and then do the site plan approval?
Yeah. Well, and I guess we should close the hearings first.
You should act on the waivers before you close the hearing.
Okay.
And I missed the first waiver, so I'm going to let Matt take it.
Well, that was for the vertical datum.
Correct.
So I would move that we approve the waiver for the vertical datum.
Again?
Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Aye.
Bertram?
Aye.
An aye for myself.
And I would make a motion that we approve the waiver for the architectural elevation, the stamped architectural elevations.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And aye for myself. And then, what was our third?
The third one was the impact reports.
I would make a motion that we waive the traffic impact report.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And aye for myself.
Aye.
Excellent. And we don't need a waiver for the observation well.
Right.
So we're good there.
You do need waivers for community services and fiscal impact reports, though. There's a four-pack of impact reports we require. They did do stormwater, you've waived traffic, and then it would be community impacts and fiscal impacts.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the waiver for community and fiscal impacts?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And aye for myself.
Aye.
Do we?
Who is saying aye? Do we have another?
I believe Mr. Torgerson is on the call.
Oh.
Okay.
Yes, I am on the call.
Excellent. I wasn't aware, but I will certainly call on you. Thank you for joining us. Excellent. Adam, can we do both of those in pack?
I'm sorry?
Can we do both of those as one motion?
Yeah, you could have done all the waivers this one if you wanted to.
Okay, excellent. So we're all set with the waivers. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearings for the stormwater and site plan approval.
So moved.
Excellent. All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Excellent.
Would you like a rundown of the conditions the board has discussed so far prior to?
I think I have them.
Okay, there was, there was one at the previous meeting that was also included.
Okay.
Was that all car carriers, all loading and unloading.
Be off, be done on.
Be offsite, yeah, correct. Be off of Chase Road. But if you've got the rest of them, that's fine. I just didn't want us to miss that one.
All right, well, just tell me if I don't have them. I would make a motion that, should I do them both simultaneously, site plan and stormwater?
Yes, I mean, you can.
Okay, I would make a motion that we approve the site plan approval for Chase Road and the stormwater permit with the following conditions, that all loading and unloading of vehicles shall be done on the property and off of Chase Road, that conformatory soil testing shall be done when the machine mobilizes to the site in the area of the subsurface infiltration system. Stamp plan shall be received indicating, correcting the pipe size of the pipe from four inches to six inches. A Title V inspection shall be done, and this permit is issued with the condition that the existing system will be utilized. In the event that a new system is required, a modification to the site plan will be required. For stormwater, that all maintenance associated with the stormwater system shall be included in the permit as Appendix A. And annually, the applicant shall provide a maintenance report detailing all maintenance done on the system.
To be submitted by, why don't we call it July 1?
And shall be submitted by July 1st annually.
Excellent. Is there a second?
A second, yes.
Any discussion on a stormwater permit and site plan approval? Seeing none, all those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent.
Thanks.
Can, can I just? I do just have a question on the voting. Adam, will Mr. Torgensen need to fill in a Mullen form?
You know what, it's actually going to be a three zero vote, because even if he were to fill a Mullen form, he's missed more than one here.
Okay.
All right.
Congratulations, you did it without Mr., oh, Mr. Rogers.
We did, and I thank you, because this is the last meeting I can do from my deck in New Hampshire with coffee and cigarettes. So it's nice to get an approval. Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thanks for your help.
All right. Moving on, our next item on the agenda is an A and R for 150 Holman Street. Mr. Marchetti?
Yes, sir. So again, Brian Marchetti here, behalf of Palston Gravel. At the previous hearing, we discussed the stormwater permit, and the issue was brought up that you wouldn't be able to approve it without the A and R plan establishing your lots. So as I said, we had the plan in hand. We were kind of just waiting to get far enough along the process, so we knew we weren't going to have to change these lot lines, so plan was submitted, the application. I have it if you want me to share the screen.
Oh, I got that.
Did you say I could or no?
No, you can't. I had the plan.
Oh, okay, perfect. So here it is. This divides the 18 acres into the seven proposed lots that we've been discussing. And we have adequate frontage and access to every lot that meets zoning, so we feel this plan is adequate and ready for you guys to review and approve.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
Adam, I just want to check the amount of uplands compared to wetlands. These lots meet that?
Yes, they significantly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If I may, isn't it the purple house that already has another house being built?
No.
No? Okay.
No, you're thinking on the other side of the intersection. This is.
This is the south side of Northfield.
Okay.
So if you go past the North Cemetery, this is just on the left, just before you get to Northfield Road.
Okay, correct.
So at our last meeting, Mr. Marchetti, you made a note about a potential buyer for Lot 2 may look to move the house forward, but regardless of how that pans out, these lots would remain the same. That would affect the lot line, correct?
Yes, no, it didn't affect anything. The plan that I had presented at the last meeting had the revised house orientation.
Okay, all right.
So this is the file. As it is, we can accommodate the design that we've presented so far.
All right. Any other questions from members of the board regarding this A and R? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the A and R for 150 Howard, no, Holman?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the hearing for the same property.
Yes. So as as I said before, we met back in the end of May, and we had reviewed Graves Engineering's comments. There was really only one comment that was outstanding with respect to Lot 5 and Lot 6. Making sure that stormwater wasn't being impounded or directed onto abutting properties. So Lot 6, where Adam's pointing his cursor right now, that's been revised to accommodate a four-foot retaining wall, which allows us about 15 to 17 feet of clear width from along the property lines of the retaining wall. So there's no stormwater being impounded there. The one remaining comment from Mr. Walsh we received this morning, and we have since revised the northern edge of Lot 6. Septic system and everything stayed in place where. Septic system and everything stayed in place where it was. We just modified, oh, sorry, lot five, I mean, not six. We go to the lot in the corner of Holman and Northfield. Yes, right there. Yeah. So that note, if you want to zoom in there, I can just point out. What we did was we revised the grading to accommodate a small swell, if you will, just so the natural or the proposed grade would direct stormwater runoff from the property, the abutting property to the north. It flows naturally onto this proposed parcel. And the way that the septic system was, had to be designed because it had groundwater, it was creating about a foot of impoundment. But that's been revised now to allow the water to free flow across the property. So, and like we submitted it to Graves today, had a follow up phone call with Mr. Walsh. And I believe he was in agreement as well that all comments, all of his comments have been addressed. And he supplied a follow up response to comment letter stating such this afternoon to Adam. So this should wrap up all, all comments.
Okay. Any questions from the board on any of that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
I don't have comments on that, but I do actually, I guess I have a question from Mr. Walsh based on his experience with stormwater. Because these are all going to be single family lots and the stormwater systems will require maintenance. I'm concerned about how ensuring that that maintenance is done. And I would ask if you've run into this problem before and what's been done in the past to ensure that the maintenance is done? And if, if reporting has been required?
Okay, before Mr. Walsh jumps in, could I just add one more comment?
Sure.
And it's pertaining to the stormwater. So these, these seven lots were all approved by conservation on June 2nd. And part of their conditions in perpetuity require the deeds to have provisions in them so that the operation and maintenance plan that was included per lot has to be submitted to the conservation agent on a yearly basis. It's written in the deed. So every homeowner is going to be legally bound to provide those documents to conservation.
Okay, so they're gonna have.
That's already in their conditions.
You're gonna have to require the maintenance plan.
Yes, and that maintenance plan has to be maintained, and they need to provide the written maintenance logs to the conservation agent on a yearly basis.
Okay. Okay, so I will just comment that because we are the stormwater permitting authority, I would like to make, if moving forward, I would, and I don't know how we do that. I guess we just make it part of our permit approval that I would also like to have those maintenance records submitted to the planning board.
It would be the same condition that you replaced on the last.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And to answer Mrs. Bertram's question, I've been, I've seen similar designs for single families. But I was not privy to if there was a mechanism in place to for the approving authority to monitor the O and M of these systems. Nor was I privy as to whether or not they were able to, or they did require reporting back to the town or the approving authority on a regular basis. Very good point. And unfortunately, in my opinion, you know, making sure the obligations are fulfilled by the homeowners is important. Over time, if they fill in these rain gardens or fail to maintain them, the stormwater mechanism kind of goes away. So it sounds like you've got it covered between conservation and the stormwater authority for requiring reporting back to the town.
And I think after the first or second year of us following up, when they haven't done it, it will be hard for them to say they, they don't know if those are there. They should be doing it.
That's going to be your biggest hurdle is figuring out a mechanism to do this with everybody now moving forward.
It's, it's really just, it's a logistics problem of tracking and ensuring that you can get in touch with those folks.
I agree. I'm just delighted that we're going through the stormwater permit process for a project like this. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Allison, Mr. Torgensen?
No, it seems like everything's been addressed.
Mr. Torgensen, do you have any comments or concerns?
Not.
All right. Well, I feel like we're ready to move forward with this. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion about closing the hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor? Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
And an I for myself.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. We're not done yet. We still have to approve the permit. And what do we have for conditions? The O and M was included with the conservation?
I, I would like the condition to be that the stormwater maintenance reports shall be provided to the planning board annually by July 1st for each lot.
Okay. Anything else?
I would add standard things like it's built to the plan that the applicant abide by all other approvals received, local, state and federal. I don't know if you want to add construction hours, being that it's in a residential area as opposed to something like North End, which is got, you know, acres and acres of land around it before you run into a resident that isn't paying the rent.
I think it makes sense to include hours.
Mr. Bernie, do you have our standard conditions that?
I do. I don't, I'm not able to get on to the server at the Ritter. I, I did, I was able to last time I logged in tonight and it kept kicking me out, but if you want, uh, those are some, those are a fair amount of the standard ones. I think there might be one or two others that I'm not remembering off the top of my head.
So is it typically 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM or what is it?
Uh, it, it, the board has generally done it tailored to the area. I think from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM to 8:30 to 3:30.
On weekends?
Uh, no, 8:30 to 3:30 on weekdays, depending on traffic and proximity of residents and stuff like that. I would say 7:30 to 4:30 is probably the most standard for residential area or eight to four. And the week would usually be eight to 12 on Saturday, no Sunday and holiday.
So personally, I would like to see, I'm fine with 7:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday, but I would like it to be no earlier than 8:30 on Saturday and Sunday. I don't know about you guys, but I like to sleep in on the weekends and I'm sure other people do too.
Good point, yep.
So 7:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday and 8:30 to 3:30 on Saturday, no Sundays? Is that?
Yeah, usually we say no Sundays and holidays.
Okay, I'm, I'm great with that.
Now, it's, it's seven, seven houses. It's going to be a lot of vehicle trips and materials and stuff. And, and Northfield is a scenic road and Holman is kind of a tight back road. Do we want to have any mention at all about routes?
Good point.
I don't know. I'm a little bit conflicted because I feel like sometimes when you get into those details, you start manipulating things beyond what you really should. And you may, you may get unintended consequences of it. I feel like this particular property where you've got two streets, if they're working on the Holman Street side, they're going to use Holman. If they're working on the Northfield side, they're going to use Northfield and.
And the lot's bisected by what? So it's not like you could say all deliveries need to come through Holman because there's no way for them to get that material. Or no, all through Northfield, you can't get the material to Holman or vice versa.
Yeah, yeah. One question I had for Mr. Marchetti. In, at this point, do you know if you're going to need to do anything with the scenic road for trees or stone walls?
There is one tree on Northfield that's within the footprint of the driveway. So yes, we're, we're filling out the scenic road permit application right now.
All right.
We'll probably have that this weekend.
So one tree, no stone walls?
No stone walls, yep.
All right.
And that, that stretch of, of Northfield over there, like the site distances in both directions are wide open. It's, 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 it's too big. It's, it's kind of a, it's all a bunch of scrub brush, but there happens to be one tree 20 feet off the road, right there in the middle of it.
Yep, there's one in every crowd.
Is it on your property or is it on the town?
Well, I, I have to check that, but I think it's close. If it's not, if it's not on our property, it's only a couple of feet onto town property, but I think we're on town.
All right. Any other conditions for the stormwater permit? So we have the hours of operation, follow the plan, and then the O and M reporting requires.
The O and M is an appendix and then the reporting on July 1st annually.
Yep. Any other conditions that we would like to include? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
The, I'm sorry, did you include the abide by all other approvals, local, state and federal?
Well, we can include them.
Yeah, well, if you would, that'll just, that'll, that'll tie conservation into planning and just be, it creates a circle.
I would make a motion to approve the stormwater permit with the conditions as just outlined.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
And an I for myself. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Marchetti.
Great, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is the board all set with me?
I believe we are.
Okay. Thank you all. It was good to see everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Moving on to minutes approval for May 24th.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of May 24th, 2021. Can I make it in one motion and the minutes of May 24th, 2021 for 150 Holman Street?
I will second both of them.
Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Torgensen?
Am I allowed to say aye on this?
Yep.
Aye.
And an I for myself. Moving on to committee reports, TCP Building Design Committee.
Yes, they're going to, uh, we're going to be meeting this Wednesday. And it's going to be in the planning, planning conference area.
Excellent. So there's no news on TCP just yet?
Um, not that I'm aware. We, we, we had, um, we had gotten together previous time and without the consultants, just to kind of spitball moving forward. We, um, that, that was about it.
Great. Headcom?
And Headcom will be meeting the next night downstairs in the Ritter building. Um, we did have our first farmer's market yesterday, went off really well. We had 15 vendors. Um, there's no masks, there's no ribbon everywhere. The building's unlocked. Everybody was very happy. I did see a couple of people wearing masks, but for the most part, people were very happy to be out enjoying seeing other people smile.
Excellent. Uh, Stormwater Task Force.
Uh, there is a meeting Thursday. Unfortunately, I will be able to attend as I will be out of town. But they are meeting Thursday.
Okay, open space.
Uh, meeting tomorrow.
And capital planning. Not meeting for a little while, I would assume. Who's on capital planning now?
I think it's Paula, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I'm spacing.
So they must not be meeting if she's not remembering.
Yeah, we're not meeting.
Economic Development Committee.
Uh, had a meeting scheduled last week, but due to a conflict, the meeting didn't go off. And Adam, has a meeting been scheduled?
Uh, I sent out a, a request for the 24th, which would be a week from Thursday.
Okay. MRPC and MJTC are Mr. Brenner, and he's not with us this evening. I think he's attending a 40B workshop.
That he is.
Excellent. All right, moving on to our workshop, master plan invitation for bid.
So uh, we talked about this the last time. And I went back and I looked through and added some more meat to the deliverables and to the list of what we would be looking for them to use. I did it in a couple of different parts. So there's a lot of formatting and typographic errors, which are a lot of the stuff that leads up to. But if we get to scope of services on the like I said, did just about public participation, which is B under number three, Roman numeral three.
Do you want to just move it up to it on the screen?
I forgot I had it on the screen.
Yeah, you have it. I'm just watching.
I have the paper so I can write on it, but.
Yep, I get it.
So we talked about making sure it was two complete master plan elements, including goals, objectives and estimates of implementation cost. So that will hopefully clarify what we're looking for. So it's not a goal and policy statement. You know, the question was brought to me, have we, are we gonna, have we settled the master plan committee? Question. We haven't, but the planning board's essentially going to be the master plan committee if you don't create a separate committee, right? So if we just leave it in there as master plan committee, then it, it gives you that option as you move forward. If the consultant comes in and says something that you're like, oh, you know what? That really makes sense. We should do that. You're not getting into, oh, well, the IFB didn't say that.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I, I just, I think it, it just designates a group as responsible for the master plan.
Well, along those lines, could we say in the master plan committee slash planning board? I just don't want to create the like lead to the fact that we're going to have a committee because I don't think we need a committee. So I feel like this is kind of paving the way for creating a committee when we.
I mean, you already have a committee here. I mean, the, the planning board is a committee. And if, if you want to, if you want to add that in there, we certainly can do that.
Yeah.
And I'll just put planning board parenthetical after master plan committee.
I mean, we can certainly have a discussion about forming a committee, but I feel like we've had that discussion a couple of times in the past and it always seems to circle back to the planning board going through the process, so.
We have, I I just, again, I'll I'll state the case. I think it takes some of the lift off of the planning board for the buildup to selling whatever elements you create. Uh, you get the opportunity, much like Open Space or TCP, for members of that committee to participate. Go back to their individual domains, share what they've participated and bring back any feedback. Rather than the the planning board sitting with themselves doing the the work and then bringing it out to the committee and to draft it to other committees and draft form and having to go to five, six, eight different places and say, here's where we are. Take all that input, then go back and try and shuffle it about, but I I it it works either way.
So I I, to me, the master plan is one of the most important aspects of the planning board. And while I agree that we need to work with all of the other departments, I think the responsibility ultimately lies with the planning board. And we should be the committee. Um, I do agree that we may want a subcommittee or an advisory group or to be made up of other members, but but I believe that the the master plan is the role of the planning board.
Ultimately, it is, and it would be similar to Open Space. Open Space is or Economic Development. They're subcommittees of the planning board. They report back to the planning board. Ultimately, anything that they're proposing or doing could require the the buy-in or or support of the planning board. And I know there's been discussion about Open Space morphing into its own committee, which would be a separate thing, but so
And I think committees do morph into their own, their own thing. I think it's a natural evolution and I think that in this case, I don't want that to happen.
Fair enough.
I believe it needs to be the planning board.
Mass General Law specifies that it is the planning board, so I don't think there's any concern about it being misconstrued.
It's the planning board's requirement, but
But if we create a a master planning committee, as as Adam has suggested in the past, which would consist of various people from various departments. I'm not personally not in favor of that.
Neither would I. I would just, from that number five, say that the consultant work with the staff and a planning board. And
That's fine.
Or not mislead the consultant to think that they're working with a group that doesn't exist. So, and in terms of creating a committee, I agree with Mrs. Bertram, especially given the fact that the planning board currently has a really good representation of all the different aspects in town right now. I mean, between Open Space with Mrs. Bertram's involvement and Mr. Allison on Agcon, I mean, I feel like we've got a pretty good group of people here that have a lot of valuable information to share and we've got all the pieces of the puzzle. We just need to put it together, so. Adam, did you want any of the kind of more clerical stuff and I just
If you see something, yeah, yeah.
It like, I'm gonna say it's page two, right after the cover. Uh, invitations for bids, it says cleaning services municipal.
Yeah. Oh, there it is, yep. Some of this stuff is is standard format, so it's easy to miss that. And it's funny because I got it in the text of the body, just the heading. Uh, alright, so then we went to deliverables, um, and now we have two completed master plan elements. Including using information gathered from the multitude of studies, the population growth uh, and the existing data um, to create these recommendations. Uh, including potential costs for public services and facilities. Potential cost for the other element is, I think, a bit more amorphous because it's talking about and that kind of stuff, stuff that's not, not, it's not a hard cost.
Right.
And then, you know, obviously the deliverables, what form that they're going to take. Uh, then we get into selection cr- uh, consultant qualifications. So I bumped up the experience from five to fifteen years. Uh, and I think that will get us someone a little more senior, uh, someone who, you know, has a a bit experience out there. Uh, and then under B, I went to try and firm up that the people that come and sell their firm to us are the ones that we actually end up working with as opposed to them sending, you know, the A team to come out and sell Lunenburg some master plan services and then they grab the three kids that they just college and say, here you go, guys, go cut your teeth out there. Um, so uh, hopefully this would protect us and and give us the ability to make sure that the people we're we're working with are you know, the ones that we see. Uh, and then trying to firm up uh, that they work within the timeline scheduled here or they say, listen, your timeline isn't going to work for this reason or that reason. Here's the timeline we propose and it becomes mutually agreed upon uh, thing. Selection criteria goes away totally because it's it's entirely price driven. Uh, and submission requirements, I know we talked about requiring certain things. These are all required through the IFB. Uh, I looked at probably uh, a dozen or so master plans and master plan, uh, RFPs or IFBs. And this list is pretty comprehensive of what was standard throughout all of them. Uh, so it's not as if you know, and looking at it, I I was having a hard time coming up with something else that would we would want to require that would give us an insight into into how these folks work. I'm open to to more suggestions. You know, you look at enough of these things and they all start to look the same, so it's easy to
I was fine with what you had.
Any other comments? It looks good to me. The only question I had on the fifteen year requirement qualifications was, well, I guess two comments. One is um, I'm assuming we're doing combined experience? Correct? Like if you have
Yeah, yeah, I I mean, I would say that the, yeah, it would be, it would have to be combined.
I would just add that word.
Yep, just to make it clear that and given that, I think fifteen years, and so I was just questioning if if the thought process was that everybody has at least fifteen years.
No, no, that would be
Too much.
We couldn't afford that on forty three thousand dollars.
The only other comment I had is I did see that you listed the studies um, at the end of the the IFB. I would just recommend you give a short, short description of what they are.
Okay.
But other than that, I thought that was fine. If necessary, so for example
Did I miss anything? That I, you know, I I poured through the website, I I wrecked my brain and I I was like, I know I'm going to put this up there. Someone's going to say, why did you work with this?
Um, the Town of Lunenburg Building Assessment and Space Need Study of twenty sixteen, is that?
I was just gonna say, is that Chape? Okay, so actually reading this, you don't need to do descriptions. I think you're good.
And I mean, what I'll probably do is um, all of this is available digitally and I'll turn these all into hyperlinks.
Yep.
Um, and whether or not folks use those or not, that's up to us, but at least it's there and it's easy to get to.
No, I think that's good. I would just eliminate the blank bullet at the bottom.
Yeah. That was a space saver.
Yep.
For the one that I missed.
I think you got them all.
Uh, and then everything after that, I mean, I'm willing to talk about it, but I didn't create any of it. It is well outside of my scope of practice. It's all the standard um, this is all the standard IFP, uh, IFB, RFP. Yeah, it it's just the legal documentation that goes with it.
So I do want to talk about the timelines, which are blank in the document. What are reasonable timelines?
Uh, I think, actually, I think the timelines aren't blank. I think that they um, the timelines for the work say six to nine months.
No, no, I know that, but I mean the
But you're talking about the the date, the submission. So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna accept all these changes. I'm going to put the hyperlinks in. I'm going to make sure all the formatting looks good and I'm going to send it over to the assistant town manager, who is also um, handling the majority of procurement. Uh, and what happens is with something like this, the town creates it, they find out uh, when they can run it on the central register and it runs for thirty days on the central register. Um, as well as it's advertised here, there and everywhere. And I'll shoot it up on mass planners, um, it'll probably go in the the Sentinel Enterprise uh, and on the central register. So whenever the next publication of the central register that we can get in, it would be due thirty days after that.
Okay.
So I mean, it's what, June fourteenth? Excuse me, I I would expect uh, I think they publish the central register every fourteen or 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 twenty one days. So it would be probably late June, early July, and then it would be thirty days after that. Then we'd have a bid opening, which is probably fourteen days after the close, and then the award is usually ninety days after that.
Why is it ninety days after that?
Uh, it's not, it's it because once they award it, then they have to negotiate, they have to get the contract signed and all that. So they say it has to be done within ninety days. It's not it's not, you have to wait ninety days. It's you have ninety days to to wrap it up, I think is what it says.
Okay.
And and that, I I I believe that language is in there. I'd have to look a little closer. I would say it will probably be um, early fall when the consultant is here starting. So it could be just after the start of school uh, into Columbus State, something like that.
Okay.
So Adam, you'll go ahead and make those?
I'll make those changes in the morning and I'll send it over to Julie.
Okay, and get the ball rolling and so we anticipate by the end of the month that it goes out on the register and
Yeah, and uh, once I have a a confirmation from her that everything is fine by her and that she's going to place it, I'll ask her when it, when that actually publishes and I'll let y'all know.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else from any of the other board members? I noticed Mr. Brenner has joined us. Do you have any comments on the master plan invitation forbid? I guess.
I do not know.
Excellent. Any directors items?
Uh, no, I I did send out today the um, time clock for one oh one Pleasant Street. Uh, I thought that I had done it uh, a week or so ago and I looked and the draft email is still sitting there, so I I just, I sent it out to you. I think we have something like eighty eighty-five or eighty-eight days left. Yeah, and and we're on hold until the twenty eighth, so um, nothing's going to pass until after that. You'll open the hearing, we'll lose a day, or however many it takes them to sign off on the uh, the continuance after that, if there is a continuance after that.
Okay.
Nice, nice. The plans landed in my inbox, I think, today, uh, and it looks like we're down to four lots and eight units.
Okay.
But those uh, those, the rest of that will be in, I think uh, later this week as far as hard copies. So once they're in, Marjorie will probably let you all know if you want to come pick up your your packets. You can do that ahead of time if you really want to dig into them.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, moving on to our meeting schedule. We're back in Town Hall. This is our last virtual meeting. Um, so
I seem real broken up about it.
I am. I will miss my cups of tea.
You can bring tea to Town Hall.
Uh, so June twenty eighth, we have two public hearings, one for one oh one Pleasant Street and one for seven eleven Massachusetts Ave. And then our following meetings are July twelfth and July twenty sixth. Adam, could you bring us up to speed on how this hybrid model is going to work as?
No, I can't.
Okay.
Because I don't know either. What I do know is that for probably the past eight to nine months, uh, the IT director and PAC have been working together to integrate Zoom capabilities into the studio equipment at the Town Hall. Uh, so they have installed a second gigantic television on the back wall of the Balada Meeting Room. So the board will be sitting where they normally sit, looking at a giant TV screen. Uh, and I believe anybody who uh, chooses to participate remotely would be projected on that screen. And it will be managed, as I understand it, through the PAC studio. So the videographers will also be the remote meeting managers. So the board will just be doing their board business. As for, uh, I don't believe that anybody is prohibited from attending in person. I believe the hybrid option is offered as an additional uh, way to participate for those who are unable or uncomfortable to attend in person. Uh, and in order for the board to have a quorum, we have to have a a physical quorum onsite. So if for some reason um, someone's unable to make the meeting, we would still need three bodies in the room. Uh, and I think uh, as before, um, the pandemic, if someone uh, wished to or needed to participate remotely, they could do so under the pre-existing uh, remote participation policy through the the select board.
Okay.
I think tomorrow night, the select board will be the first hybrid meeting, so uh, I think that will be one to watch to figure out exactly what um, what the 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 deal is.
Okay. Um, any idea what the seating arrangement's going to be like? Are we going to be back on stage?
I believe so.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that arrangement?
I am. I'm vaccinated now, so I'm
Okay. Um, so, sounds good. We'll have a little bit of learning to do, I'm sure, as we go along and try to navigate public comments coming in by Zoom through PAC, but we'll get it sorted out. So. Uh, ongoing items, do we have any ongoing items?
I think we've cleaned them all up so far.
Okay, I had one quick question, just seeing the hearing for seven eleven Mass Ave. I suspect that that project might be in the watershed protection district. Adam, if you could just reach out to the applicant and make them aware of that so that they can do their math. Just to give them the heads up and that way they can prepare, so. Any public comment? I don't think we have any public, so. Any board comments or concerns? I had, I guess, a quick comment. One is, I think we should include an item on our next agenda to address the stormwater permit reporting process. Like to just come up with a standard set of conditions, and Adam, if you could touch base with Matt Morrow and try to get this lined up with conservation so that all the reporting requirements are the same. So that.
Yep.
Include, I'd like to include stormwater, the permit itself, because I'd like us to have a standard stormwater permit. And and like I said earlier, I I'm starting to do some work for the Town of Tingsboro, and and their stormwater permit is really great, so I'm going to send that out to Adam.
Can I suggest that we do this at the first meeting in July? It sounds like this will be a relatively healthy discussion and could take a little bit of time. And with 711 and 101 Pleasant Street both on the docket, I don't want the board to get to 9:15 and be like, all right, now let's start talking about this other heady thing that we want to be specific about. If you, I I'm happy to talk about it, then I just, I want to give it it proper time, and we don't have anything on for the 12th as of right now.
Yeah, my thought would be, let's put it on on the 28th. We can always pass it over. Or make our first swipe at it and then finish it up on the 12th.
That's fine.
And also, the standard conditions that we have, I'd like to incorporate that as part of the process. I don't know if it's possible for us to share those conditions right up front with the applicant and.
Yeah, I think if 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 the board wants to adopt standard conditions, and I, you know, I think I have a draft of them somewhere. The board can, as a policy, create their standard conditions. And we can post it right on the website, standard conditions for site plans, special permits, stormwater permits. And then you can, we can, at some point, if you want, in the future, if we we modify the rules and breaks, you can just include them as an appendices. And then you can just refer to them as standard conditions. You won't have to read them out every time.
Okay, I think that makes a lot of sense. Just to streamline that process make the meeting process that much easier. And along those lines, on the permitting side of things, it's my understanding that when anybody applies for a building permit in town, they go on, they do their electronic thing, and then all the boards get alert that says this person pulled the building permit for their project. Is planning part of that?
We are.
So.
It's not the boards, it's a sign off from from the staff.
Okay.
So, you know, it goes to Matt Morrow, or it goes to Rob Oliver, or police chief, or one of the fire protection officers.
Okay. And I guess my point with that is I feel like for some of the projects that really should be going through the stormwater process, they're slipping through the cracks. So I don't know exactly where Planning Board fits into this scheme, but I feel like anybody that's pulling a permit that could potentially be disturbing more than an acre or be subject to a stormwater permit for another reason. How do we work on that system so that we're letting people get their permits if they're not subject to it, but also there's, there's going to be some sort of trigger there that says, okay, well, wait a minute, you you're disturbing more than an acre and you.
Well, I, we look, the the plans are all there, so we have the ability to view the plans, and we do as we're signing off on them. Most individual houses aren't going to tip an acre, and if they're a common development, they're usually something the board has seen. The building commissioner has indicated that individual ownership separates common projects, so if someone were to get two lots approved through an A and R, and then sells the lots to two individuals, those seems to be a common development because it's not one person developing. So if, if you cut up, you know, as opposed to Ken Matson or the Pallastone and Gravel, where those are going to be developed in in one piece, they they're going through the process of doing the stormwater because they're being developed as as a group.
Okay, I wasn't aware that Matson is going through that, but.
Uh, yeah, out on Flat Hill.
Okay.
He's, he he hasn't submitted it yet, but he 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 has retained an engineer, and the engineer is working on his scenic road and his stormwater. The the development on the other side of Holman Street, or the other side of Northfield Road on Holman Street from the Bray Ave Development, the Dr. Massey's old former land. Those guys have hired an engineer, and they're in the process of going through their their stormwater design as well.
Okay. Now, would we just update our policies to kind of clarify some of this? Because I know, like, my understanding of the stormwater is that even if you subdivide into one acre lots, if they're all in common ownership at the time that the work is done.
That's correct. If they're in common ownership at the, at the time the permits are applied for, that that would, we we would grab that and trigger it. And actually, over on Cross Road, we had the situation where those two lots came through. And we stopped it, and their engineer went out and did a drawing and said, no, he's at 41,786 square feet or whatever. Actually, went out on the lot and staked the areas where the plan was showing he would be doing the work. And the the building commissioner was diligent about ensuring that the work being done was within the the pre-staked areas that kept it below the one acre.
All right. Well, we can all, we can continue that discussion as part of our next meeting and just, I'm just looking to try to streamline the process as much as possible.
And I understand, and and we, we are, we do work on it, and we do talk to people about it. People come in and say, I'm going to do this. Well, if you're over this, you need to do this and be aware of it, and so they either work really hard to stay under it, or they get in the queue with the engineer to wait six months for them to be able to do it for them.
Yeah. And then my only other comment is, or concern, on the 40B projects, I know we have one that's potentially coming along. Adam, can you tell us how that low income requirement works? In other words, if.
Yes, I.
Well, my question is, hypothetically speaking, if somebody's looking to build 200 units, are they all low income?
No, and and there, no, the the quantum for 40B is 25% of the units need to be affordable. Low, moderate income affordable. So they're not low income units. There, there's no subsidy, so the the government isn't giving anybody money to pay the rent. It's a formulaic rent allocation. So the the, the theory is that no one should spend more than 30% of their annual income on housing. And I know some of us do, some of us don't, that just you kind of figure that out individually, but that's, that's how you figure out what's considered affordable for an income range. In a 40B, they take the metropolitan, metropolitan statistical area. And they take 80% of the median income. And that is what qualifies as low mod, is 80% of the median income for for an MSA. And then 30% of that 80% amateurized over 12 months is what equals affordable.
Okay, and my real question was how it affects the town in terms of our safe harbor percentages and so on.
Oh, well, that that's different than than the affordable. So whether you build rental or for sale units, 25% of the units have to be affordable per that formula. And they're required to be identical to all of the other units. So if you put granite in one unit, you put granite in all the units, and everybody has to deal with it. If you sell them, the town only gets to count the 25% of affordable units as part of the subsidized housing inventory. If you rent them, every unit in the development counts towards the subsidized housing inventory. Even even the market rate units. So if this unit were to, if this development were to be approved, and it was built at 200 units, we would get 200 units on our, on our subsidized housing inventory.
Okay.
And the same is true for the development on Waylon. It's 125 units. And I think 27 or 28 of them are affordable, but we get credit for 125.
Okay, all right. Excellent. Any other board comments or concerns?
The only other comment I have is relative to the 40B. I had mentioned at the last meeting, I I'm strongly encouraged we consult with town council relative to the extension of water, which I believe would require a change in legislation, and I don't know if you've had a chance to do that.
Well, we did consult with council when it was first brought to us. Since we don't have anything formal, we're only going by what we're told from the potential applicant. Council seemed to think that this was something that was permissible under 40B.
And and that's my concern is, is, you know, you indicated that at the last meeting, and I think it's extremely important that town council look at the legislation creating the water district. Because it is very specific as to how water can be extended within the water district.
We don't have office hours again till this Thursday, so I will, I will pass that along to you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess under the circumstances, it's hard to look at an issue that hasn't fully developed yet, but.
And that, yeah, and I mean, until they're notified by the subsidizing agency that it's actually been filed with them, this is all speculation. So we're you know, we're trying to be ready, but we can't jump to any conclusions.
Well, and I understand that, but when you say trying to be ready, I think to hear at the last meeting that town council thought it was possible under 40B, I think it's important in order to be ready that town council be aware of the chapter, I think it's 36 Acts of 19, I can't, I'm not going to quote it because I don't know, but the the enabling acts that created water district are very, very clear. And if they have not yet looked at those, that's going to be an important component of being ready.
All right, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor of adjourning, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. See you guys at town hall.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.